If I could get everybody's attention, I want to welcome everybody to the, we'll call it a order, the March 22nd, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Thank you for coming down today. And our first action is going to be the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, have you all reviewed the agenda? We'll need a motion to adopt. It's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. We're now on to item C, which is the approval of the March 8th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Those were mailed to you previously. I hope you all have reviewed those. Any questions? We'll need a motion to adopt those minutes. It's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the March 8th minutes have been adopted. Now, we are on to the recognition, item D, which is the recognition of the council members. And I always do these as I see them come in. And so the first is Councilman Jeff Syracuse. I saw Councilman Syracuse. You want to wait until the perfect? Second was Councilman Primo. I saw him. You want to come on up, or you want to wait till the... Okay. And then I saw Councilwoman Berkeley Allen. Councilwoman, you want to come up now, or... Come on up. Welcome. Come up to the middle over here. Yep. There we go. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Commissioners. It is nice to see all of you again. I have missed the biweekly meetings. I don't miss the biweekly preparations. So I know how hard you work, and I appreciate your efforts tremendously. I'm here to speak mostly on one item, but I'm going to throw in another one. That one is item seven, which is the Belmont Institutional Overlay. I would like to ask for your support for that. Belmont has did this at the request of the Belmont Neighborhood Advisory Group, which was created as a result of the original overlay when it was passed in 2005. The group felt like there had been so much growth that they had pretty much done everything that they had planned for in the first overlay, and they said it seems appropriate now to amend this to sort of let us know what your next phase of growth would look like. So they've been very diligent in meeting with the community. They've had two to three community meetings. They've gone to a number of different neighborhood association meetings. They've been very responsive to the comments and have made a number of changes to deal with the concerns that have come up. We still are having a few conversations with one particular area of neighbors with concerns about traffic, but that's a neighborhood close to 12 South. So in terms of what has caused that traffic, it's probably a combination of Nashville's growth in many areas. And I believe that we will deal with that issue separately, either with traffic calming or traffic signals independently of the institutional overlay. And also, as you know, the process of the overlay simply defines what is expected to happen, but as each of those individual projects that are projected actually happens, there will be another traffic study that would deal with any traffic remediation that's needed at that time. So I feel like Belmont has done a good job of their due diligence, and from what I've heard from the neighborhood associations, they are satisfied with the changes that were made, and I would ask for your support of the passage of the overlay. And then, secondly, very briefly, would just like to throw in one comment on one B, which I believe is being deferred. That is, the reservoir, it's in Councilmember Sledge's district. It's an area around Reservoir Park, and I'm just very aware now of having seen another park with a gorgeous view lose that view because of development that wasn't very thoughtful with regard to how it affected the view shed. That when this does come back, that I know the owners, number one, are doing affordable housing, which we all applaud, and number two, I think are very actively engaged in that conversation about what the view shed is from that reservoir park as they build these areas around Eighth Avenue and on South. So I would just ask you all to keep that as a top priority as you consider that. And I know that the owners and the council member are working very diligently to make sure that that's done appropriately. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate you coming down. I didn't see any other council members, but I want to make sure. All right. Our next item is item E, which is items for deferral or withdrawal. Lucy?
The items for... Before getting to the items for deferral or withdrawal, we wanted to remind everyone here that if your meeting is deferred to the April 12th or the April 26th, 2018 meeting, the location will be at 2601 Bransford Avenue, not here. So that will be the Metropolitan Public Schools Administration Building, same time, 4:00, but it will not be at this location here. So those, again, that applies to the April 12th and the April 26th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Okay, so those items are as follows. Related items, 1A, 1B, and 1C, starting on page five, 2018 CP-010, the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan Amendment. 1B, the reservoir. And 1C, the PUD cancellation. All of these are recommended to defer to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. Item number two, 2015 SP-049, 1225 Stainback Avenue Amendment. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. On page six, item four, 2018 SP-017, Glendale and Sinek. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the April 26th Planning Commission meeting. Item number five, 2018 SP-021, the Curry Road cottages. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. Item number eight, 2017 S-217, Old Hickory Crossing subdivision. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. And then, on page nine, item number 20, 2018 M-01OT, the Donaldson Transit Oriented Redevelopment Plan. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Lucy. So let's go through these, make sure we got that list correct. Items for deferral or withdrawal are items 1A, 1B, 1C, 2, 4, 5, 8, and 20.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Commissioners, you've heard the items. Is there a motion? It's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred. And now, we are on to item F, the consent agenda.
For our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact individual legal counsel. Items on consent is notice to the public. Items on consent will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And those items are as follows, starting on page five, 2018 SP-003, 1600 DB Todd Jr. SP. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. On page six, item six, 2018 SP-027, 12558 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Item number seven, 2018 IN-001, Belmont University Institutional Overlay Amendment. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. On page seven, item nine, 80-72P-002, the Apache Trail Commercial Revision and Final Plan Unit Development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Related items, 12A and B, 2018 CP-004, Eden Wald Road, the Madison Community Plan Amendment. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 12B, 2018 Z-022, staff's recommendation is to approve if the associated plan amendment is approved and disapprove if the associated plan amendment is not approved. On page eight, item 14, 2018 Z-001TX. This is to amend Title 17 pertaining to special exception uses. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 15, 2018 SP-009, Sage Run. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Item 16, 2018 SP-011, 44th Avenue Townhomes. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Item 18, 2018 S-044, the Brooklyn Heights Resub on Hayne Street. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page nine, number 1953-84P, the Monterra Apartments. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Number 21, 2018 Z-024, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Number 22, 2018 Z-031, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. And then, under Other Business, Employee Contract Amendments for Dara Sanders and Sean Shepherd. Item 24, Certification of Bonus Height Compliance for Fifth and Broadway. And number 28, Accept the Director's Report and Approve Administrative Items. And that concludes the consent items.
Thank you, Lucy. And so we'll go through the list again, make sure we get it right. So the items on consent are items three, six, seven, nine, 12A, 12B, 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, 28. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I need to recuse myself on item number three.
And Commissioner Haynes will recuse himself on item number three.
Can I ask, did you say 17?
No.
No.
17 is being heard.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we'll need a motion to adopt those particular items. It's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. So, that means that the... What we will hear tonight for public hearing are items... Bob, make sure, and Lucy, make sure I got this correct. Items 10, 11, 13A, and 13B, and item 17. Is that correct? So if you're not here for those four items, or five, those five items, then we've already disposed of the other items. So we'll let kind of everybody clear out. And our first item is item number 10.
Good evening. Next item on the agenda is item 10. The request is rezoned from R10 to OL. The site is approximately 1.22 acres and is located at 355 Bell Road in Antioch Priest Lake area. As a point of reference, this is Bell Road along the property frontage. About 160 feet south is Rural Hill Road, and then further south than that, Bell Road intersects with Murfreesboro Pike, which is right here. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. The site is currently zoned one and two-family residential and is developed with a single-family residence. A broader look at the area shows the site located at the interior of a larger area of R10's own properties with a residential PUD located across Bell Road. Commercial and office zoning can be found further down south along Murfreesboro Pike corridor. The site is located in the T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance Policy area. As this slide shows, the site is located at the interior of a very large area of T3 NM policy. The T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy is intended to maintain the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. The T3 NM policy is applied to areas that are zoned residential and where the primary land use is envisioned to remain residential. The requested rezoning would permit a range of office uses that would be inconsistent with the surrounding land uses and the goals of the T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. Additionally, non-residential use of the property has the potential to disrupt the existing character of the neighborhood. Staff's recommendation is disapproval as the request is inconsistent with the goals of the site's T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy.
Thank you, Levi. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Ma'am, are you the applicant?
He's there.
Oh, sir, come on up. Welcome. We appreciate you coming down. You'll have 10 minutes, and then you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
All right. Initially, the Planning Committee considered 400 resident houses in this area. Has nothing to do with 355 Bell Road, which is a very concentrated area for businesses. The 355 Bell Road from Rural Hill Road to Paralline consists of two houses, one of which we want to put a bookkeeping office inside. The other building beside us is already a business. We want to occupy that building as a bookkeeping center, as I said. Traffic flow will be minimal. Exterior conditions of the building will remain as it is, except for some sprucing up and repave the driveway. That's about all I have.
And sir, state your name and address, just for the record.
Billy King.
And address.
457 Bell Road.
Thank you very much. And we'll save two minutes for your rebuttal, sir. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, I'm assuming there's no rebuttal since no opposition. We'll go ahead and declare this item, close the public hearing, and how about we go with Commissioner Michelle? You want to go first?
Sure. I drove by the property, and I know that it is close to Murfreesboro Road where there are businesses, but it is really embedded in an area that is purely residential. And I read through the rationale that staff wrote, and I feel it makes good sense.
Councilman?
Do you guys know what the local council member, what's her opinion about this rezoning?
I don't believe we have anything in writing from her formally for the Commission, but it is my understanding that she's supportive of the proposal. And she held a community meeting last week and expressed her support at that time.
I kind of agree with the staff's recommendation. It's not consistent with the T3 maintenance.
Commissioner Sims?
This is inconsistent with the policy for maintenance, so I agree with the staff.
Commissioner Haynes, no comments. Somebody needs to make a motion?
I move we accept the staff's recommendation and disapprove this application.
It's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of disapproval, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. This item is disapproved. Yes. Well, there was four yeses. Wait, five yeses and one no. Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Now, we are on to item 11.
All right, so the next item is item 11. This is a request to change the zoning from R6 to RM20A on property located at 1088, 1090, and 1092 12th Avenue South. You can see the property is outlined in red. We are about 300 feet south of the intersection of 12th Avenue South and South Street. For some orientation, this is the Rochelle Center at the corner of 12th and South, and this is Rose Park, south of the site. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. As you can see, the existing zoning on this property is R6. This is at the edge of a large area of one and two-family R6 zoning. There is existing commercial zoning at the intersection, as well as multifamily RM20 zoning across 12th Avenue and to the south of the site, and some industrial zoning to the north. And then downtown is just to the north off the screen. This is a street view of the site. So the Rochelle Center is this building on the left. The site is comprised of these two lighter-colored brick homes with a vacant lot in between, and this is a neighboring property. And this is some development that's occurring across the street from the site on the opposite side of 12th, just for some context. The zoning that's requested is RM20A, and the A stands for alternative. A bit of background on the alternative zoning districts. These were adopted for the first time in 2011. There was a recognition at that time that some of the existing zoning districts in the code were not achieving development that was consistent with the community plan in all areas. And in some cases, particularly in urban areas, some of the standards were actually working counter to that. So really deep setbacks in areas where we might want buildings to be pulled up to the street and activate the pedestrian realm. And also, that our tools in place at the time to address that were the PUD and the specific plan. And while those are great options, there might be a need for a non-site plan-based option, particularly on smaller sites. So that's where the alternative districts came from. There was also a focus on incorporating good urban design principles into those districts. The standards for many of those A districts were updated in 2015 based on the experience of implementing them and seeing where a desire for a specific plan was still coming into play. But the overarching goal of those districts was an option for a zoning tool to better achieve the community plan goals of walkable neighborhoods and pedestrian-friendly areas without always needing to rely on the specific plan. Some of the standards for RM20A include a requirement for access from the alley. There is an alley to the rear of this site, and the existing R6 district would not require that the alley be used for access. There are also building placement and design standards, such as requiring the building facade to extend along 60% of the property frontage, as well as minimum glazing and a raised foundation. And those are all aimed at activating the streetscape and making it a friendly place for pedestrians to walk along the 12th South corridor. The maximum height in this zoning district is 30 feet in the Build 2 Zone, which is the portion of the building closest to the street, with an overall maximum height of 45 feet. And the building would actually need to step back 15 feet to achieve that. That's actually less height than is permitted by the existing zoning. These properties are in the urban zoning overlay, and so the maximum height under R6 zoning would actually be 45 feet plus up to seven feet of above-ground foundation. Also note that the multifamily zoning requested would create an opportunity for the development of these parcels to consolidate access, which may not exist if each of the lots were redeveloped separately. The policy for this area is T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving. As you can see, this is on a seam among several policy areas. So there's Neighborhood Maintenance Policy to the east and more intense mixed-use corridor policy immediately to the north at the intersection. The goals of the evolving policy include more housing choices, particularly on sites directly adjacent to major corridors with existing transit, such as 12th Avenue South, and also on sites where you're on a seam adjacent to more intense policies. And in these locations, moderate intensity residential can serve as a transition between some of the more intense uses and the traffic on the corridor to the less intense neighborhoods behind. The requested RM20A would permit intensity consistent with that on the west side of 12th Avenue, but it would include the design standards that would ensure a strong urban streetscape on this corridor, consistent with the goals of the policy to enhance connectivity for all users, including pedestrians. Given the location and the context of this site, the requested RM20A zoning is more consistent with the goals of the policy than the existing zoning. It permits moderate intensity multifamily appropriate in this location, and the design standards included in the zone will ensure that good urban design principles are achieved to support many of the goals of the community plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome. State your name and your address. You have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Okay. My name's Troy Olson. I live at 904 Villa Place. I live actually about two blocks from this proposed development. And actually, it's the first time I've ever done anything like this, and I think Sean couldn't have said it better than I could say what I'd like to say about it. I know it says that my development company is called TNT Development, but it should be called One Thing Led to Another Development. I'm not a developer. I'm a songwriter, and I live in the community, have worked in the community for 20 years. And originally bought 1090 12th Avenue South with the intentions of building a home for myself, and was then approached by the owner of 1088 to purchase that property, and I decided to do that. And then subsequently ended up down at planning to talk about possible shared driveways. And that's when the first idea of possibly looking at something with a little more density and walkability to and from the gulch was introduced. Not long after that, I was approached by the other owner on the other side of me to purchase their property, and I, again, took a huge, deep breath and decided to do that as it seemed like it would be something that would maybe make a project like that more The feasibility study shows that I could do maybe 10 units there as opposed to the already-zoned six, and it would be basically the same square footage and really just asking for the same zoning that's across the street. And that's pretty much it. That's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Thanks.
We'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience in support? Seeing none, anyone in opposition? Come on up, sir. Welcome. And please state your name and your address, and you have two minutes.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. This is how you get to know your neighbors. We live directly across the street from each other. Had not known what he did, but I am the facilitator for the Edgehill Coalition Organization, which is made up of approximately 10 different groups, nonprofit churches that all work together in the coalition. We met with the applicant on March 15th for the first time. And during that process, we learned what he was proposing to do, but with no designs, without any things to look at. It's been my experience that when someone comes to a neighborhood organization, they normally have some type of sketch or plan so you can kind of look at it. We're not against density, but we do like to have some input, what comes into the community. What we're asking is that an SP be attached to this zone change. And that's what our coalition decided to do, is to come and plead for that zone change. We regret that the applicant didn't reach out to the neighbors in the beginning, to the organization, that the council didn't persuade him in the way they see our organization to speak with us. But we love Edgehill, and we feel that the preservation of Edgehill is important, and we believe that we need input into major projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
I've been in close contact with the councilman going back almost 18 months on the project, and unfortunately, through nothing that I could control, I wasn't able to meet with the neighborhood groups. He was sort of trying to facilitate that. One thing led to another. I deferred three times. It was great to finally meet all those folks. It was a really fun meeting and constructive, and their concern seemed to be really simple, which was an SP would allow some input... which was an SP would allow some input. And really, it was twofold. They were concerned about possibly bringing some lower-priced products to the market and having some control over short-term rentals. The zone change, the way it is right now, addresses both of those. If I go from six $800,000 houses to 10 or 12 houses that would be less than half of that probably, that addresses that side of it. And then the HOA that's going to be formed on this property, if there is a zone change, would have full ability to govern themselves on SDRs. And we all know that buildings like that, you know, 99.9% of the time, never allow short-term rentals. So I think their concerns are being addressed, and it's great to know Ronnie's across the street in case I need a cup of sugar. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
Given that this gentleman is not a developer, I don't find it surprising that he didn't know to meet with the neighborhood. It seems like he's taking an empty lot and two houses and making this consistent with what's across the street. I think staff analyzes it very well, so I'm going to support their staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Simms.
May I ask a question, Mr. Olson?
Sure.
Mr. Olson?
Back up.
First of all, hi, I'm your neighbor too, and I've never met you.
Hello.
I know that it's really easy to find all the neighborhood associations in our neighborhood, and the fact that it wasn't until 3:15 that you actually contacted any of them and that you've been in touch with Kobe, is there a reason there was that disconnect between what the councilman was telling you in meeting with the neighborhood?
I had no idea. I was going, I was taking his lead the whole way.
Okay.
And just didn't know, you know, and he said, you know, bear with me, I'm going to try to get you on their agenda. So I deferred in December, and then deferred again, and then deferred again, and then, you know, finally was able to have a chance. I would have loved to have started off, you know, having lots of, and may end up being part of their organization at some point, because I do live right there. I would rather see personally, I mean, I never dreamed when I bought 1090 that I would be here in front of you guys today talking about this project. This is like One Thing Led to Another.
Right.
I would, I'm not for Airbnbs. I would rather see this other way.
I just needed to know, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we don't, I just want to make sure that you had a chance to meet with them, and for some reason, that didn't connect. One of my major concerns about this particular one is, thank you, is the guidelines for our job as a planning commissioner is first and foremost to recognize the rights of citizens to participate in the planning decisions, to strive to give every citizen full, clear, and accurate information on the planning process, and to strive to expand the choices available to the neighborhood. And that's straight out of the American Planning Association's guidelines for commissioners. And so when I hear a neighborhood not be given that chance, I'm not against the development, and I actually think probably the development is a good idea. I just think it sets a terrible precedent for urban neighborhoods to not insist that the neighborhood be heard in the process. So I have to vote no on this one.
Commissioner Gallow.
You know, I've done a couple of One Thing Led to Another developments myself, and I understand how you get into that. You know, I think this is consistent with the policy. I hear what the neighborhood says, and certainly I think interaction with the neighborhood is a good idea and would have been nice to have had it better, but right now, I support staff's recommendation.
Well, I don't support the staff's recommendation. I think I will encourage the applicant to withdraw or to defer and to come back with an SP, because clearly, that's all they want. They want to be able to have access to a rendering, to understand. The thing, my point of view about rezoning is it's not about the person, it's about the site. So this person could tomorrow sell the property to somebody else that may have a different attitude about it, and the entitlement on the site will remain there. So I try not to make it about the person applying, but, you know, what does it do to the site and the neighbors? And I think it is appropriate, even though this person seems like a really nice guy that is trying to improve the community by doing this development, we don't know that he may not sell this property next week and something completely different show up there. So as a commission, I feel that we have a responsibility to ensure that the entitlements on the site are in accordance to what the community will accept. And I think the condition to do that is to make it into an SP. So I will actually vote no.
Commissioner Bachele.
So I guess I'm going to be a tiebreaker almost here, huh? I agree with everything that everyone has said so far. If you look around there, this, I understand why staff wants to not have to do an SP for every single small property. And I see how the recommendations do make it possible for the, whatever is built there to be carefully fitting in with everything else that's right around. So I definitely understand that. I definitely understand the need for community meetings, and especially because the community requested an SP. So I think I'm going to listen to the last few comments and then make up my mind at the very end. Let me ask one more question.
You are last.
Am I the very last? What about you?
The chair usually doesn't make comments.
Okay. So, okay, so I have a question then. So if they don't have an SP and we have this zone, this change, and somebody else buys the property, and they, is there any community input when the person comes to make his plan? His building permit or whatever it is that's the next step after that?
So once the zoning is in place, the building permits for the zoning would be processed through the Codes Department, and that's typically an administrative staff-level process. It's not a public hearing process.
Okay, then I'm going to go with, it would be great if we request the applicant to defer or withdraw and apply again through an SP. And so I'll vote no.
And I would suggest that they would, you ask the applicant if he is willing to change his application so that he doesn't have to pay a new application fee. I mean, he could amend this one to SP. But I would also ask for clarification on what you would want to see in an SP plan that is not in the current request. So that's, I think staff would need some clarification on that moving forward so that we know what we're looking for if this were to change to an SP zoning.
I also just want to clarify, because the staff has found that this is consistent with the policy, if you are voting to disapprove it, I think you need to clarify, I'm sorry, to approve, sorry. Staff has said that this is consistent with the policy, and they recommend approval. Because they've recommended, said that it is consistent with the policy, if you're going to disapprove it, I think you need to state how it is inconsistent with the policy so that there's, or what about it exactly that you find, again, is not consistent with the policy since that's the policy for this area.
So let's try this first. So it looks like we're pretty evenly split. So we can ask the applicant if he would be willing to change his application to an SP. So, Mr. Applicant, come on up for one second. We'll just ask you. You don't have to, we're not, it's really up to you. So we're just asking, would you be willing to change over to an SP?
This has taken, so this process has taken way longer than I ever anticipated, and the carrying costs are such that when we talked about possibly doing an SP, when I left the community meeting, the idea was for me to go gather the information as to what it would take for me to switch to an SP to address their concerns. I got that information, then reached back out to the community leaders, and never heard from them this week, reached out two different times. I just, I'm out of time. I either have to build what's zoned to build at this point or move forward. So I can't, I can't change at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll need a motion.
May I say something quickly?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Sims, what would you?
I just want to ask, I don't know that I'm necessarily for an SP as much as I am for deferral in time to have a real conversation with the community, so I don't know if that matters here, but...
Okay, so we'll ask a second question. You know, we, could the, are you asking for a one-meeting deferral?
Yes, just so that the neighborhood feels like they actually... Only so that the neighborhood does know that it has had a chance. And we've got several letters from the neighborhood in this that said that they did not feel like they had an opportunity to really discuss this with them, so...
All right, Mr. Applicant, come on up one more time.
Raise your hand.
Oh, yeah, councilman. Well, hold on a second. Councilman?
Can, is a regulatory SP an option where they wouldn't have to develop a full set of drawings, but just some kind of a information attached to the SP, also to the point that they wouldn't allow short-term rentals? So it wouldn't be a full-blown SP, but a regulatory SP, just for clarification.
Okay. Those are all options to do, SPs can be specific to each site, so they can, whatever you're, that's why I asked for clarification on what it is that the commission would want to see in an SP that's different than the current zoning.
Because, because the one I'm suggesting will be easy for the applicant to do, and it may meet the need for an expediting solution, and it may make everybody, be inclusive of everybody's point of view.
All right, so the request coming from one of the commissioners is a one-meeting deferral, which would put it at April, in April 12th, to meet, and it seems like the intent would be so that the applicant could meet with the community neighbors again, is that, would you be willing for a one-meeting deferral? Or do you still feel like you need to move forward and get a...
This property is so small, there is only, you can only build one of two things there. It's, there's only so much square footage. So even with an SP, there's massive limitations to this property. It's just a small piece of property. So without an SP, I can't build 30 stories of, I can't, you know, it's, there's only so much square footage on the property to build on, so there's just no, you know...
Okay. Answer's no. So we'll need a motion. You can, somebody needs to try to make a motion, so we'll...
I move approval of staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
No.
Where is the tie? We'll need another motion. We'll need another motion.
Can, okay. I think the only other option is that we recommend a one-meeting deferral with the, with the intention of meeting with the neighborhood.
That's a proper motion. All in favor, say aye. Any other discussion on that particular motion for a one-meeting deferral, which would be April 12th? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. All right, four ayes, five ayes, oh, two noes. It's one-meeting deferral, and with the intention of meeting with neighbors and trying to resolve. Thank you for coming down, sir. All right.
All right. Item 13A is a request to amend the Donaldson-Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan. There is an associated zoning case which will be presented next. The request is to change the policy for the 1.65 acres shown here, outlined in red, located on the east and west sides of McGavick Pike, south of Lebanon Pike, east of the Bryley-Lebanon Pike interchange in Donaldson. Plan amendment area includes three existing single-family homes and is surrounded predominantly by suburban residential development to the south, east, and west, with commercial uses located to the north along Lebanon Pike. The request is to change from T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance Policy to T3 Suburban Neighborhood Center Policy to support the rezoning of the parcels you see highlighted in red. Staff recommends approval. The associated case is to rezone from Office Limited and Office Neighborhood to Mixed-Use Neighborhood. You can see surrounding zonings are predominantly residential to the south and commercial to the north along Lebanon Pike. Subject properties are located in a large area of suburban neighborhood maintenance policy shown in the light yellow, intended for the maintenance of the residential character of the single-family neighborhood in terms of its suburban development pattern, building form, and land use. Commercial uses are not compatible with this policy. The conservation policy shown in green that touches the westernmost lot denotes a stream buffer. Urban Community Center Policy shown in purple is applied to the north and continues east along Lebanon Pike. This is a policy in the T4 Urban Transact that is applied to intense mixed-use areas developed to meet the needs of the larger surrounding community. Also in the T4 transact is Urban Residential Corridor Policy shown in pink along the south side of Lebanon Pike to the west of the subject properties, which supports higher-density residential land uses on prominent streets. The applicant has proposed a policy change to Suburban Neighborhood Center in order to allow neighborhood-scaled restaurant and retail services at this location. Neighborhood centers are intended to be compatible with the character of the suburban neighborhood and suitable for providing services to meet some of the daily needs of the surrounding neighborhoods within a five-minute drive. They are characteristically pedestrian-friendly, generally located at the intersection of suburban streets, and where the center's growth is supported by surrounding residential development, adequate infrastructure, and access. Neighborhood Center Policy is appropriate here, given the high accessibility of the property's location, close to the intersection of Lebanon Pike and McGavick Pike, which are both major arterials, and the potential to provide an appropriate transition in scale, massing, and building type from the higher-intensity T4 Mixed-Use Center to the lower-intensity T3 Single Family Neighborhood. The existing ON and OL-zoned properties in this location currently serve as a transition into the neighborhood. However, the community was in support of retail and restaurant uses at the scale enabled by the mixed-use neighborhood zoning. On February 26th, planning staff held a community meeting to discuss the plan amendment request and process and answer questions. Councilmember Syracuse and the applicant also fielded questions from approximately 20 members of the community. Attendees were generally in favor of the requests, but voiced concerns about the study area boundary of the plan amendment and its extension further south into the single-family neighborhood, which I'll address in the next slide. Questions were asked about the uses allowed by the Neighborhood Center Policy and the mixed-use neighborhood zoning. The stated intention of the applicant to adaptively reuse the existing homes was important to the community. However, the MUN zoning does not require that the existing homes be maintained. Other issues discussed were primarily related to traffic and access along McGavick Pike and stormwater management. As a result of the community's concern with the extension of the Neighborhood Center further south into the single-family neighborhood, the boundary of the policy change has been reduced to include only the properties owned by the applicant, which are located closest to the Urban Community Center Policy area to the north. Originally, planning staff established a wider boundary to study as shown to the left of your, on your screen. Amending the policy is appropriate at this location, given the high level of connectivity to a major, close to a major intersection, and the opportunities for providing additional neighborhood-scale consumer goods and services while appropriately transitioning and buffering the established single-family neighborhood from the more intense uses allowed to the north. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ed. We're on 13B.
Good afternoon. The associated zone change case is 13B. This is a zone change request going from ON and OL to MUN zoning. The properties are highlighted in red, and I was just talking about this area, but this is along McGavick Pike, south of Lebanon Pike. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions if the associated plan amendment... Pike. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions, if the associated plan amendment is approved, and disapprove if the associated plan amendment is not approved. Current zoning is OL and ON. Surrounding zoning is MUL, CS to the north, RS10 to the south, which is single-family residential, and, and single-family residential more to the southwest. The current policy is conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance, and T4 urban community center, as Anna pointed out. And the proposed policy is T3 suburban neighborhood center. This site that is still highlighted in red, as you can see, is at the edge of the existing community center policy, and it's currently zoned for mixed-use development. The surrounding areas within the T3 neighborhood maintenance policy. The proposed zoning would allow for a lower-intensity mixed-use at the edge of the community center policy, which provides an appropriate transition to both the policies. The requested zoning to MUN will create opportunities for redevelopment that is more consistent with the goals of the T4 mixed-use policy than the existing ON or OL zoning. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions, if the associated plan amendment is approved, and disapproval if the associated plan amendment is not approved.
Thank you very much. This item's open for public hearing. And applicant, 10 minutes, two minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and your address. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Sean Henry. My address is 315 Dedrick Street. I represent the property owner, that is HJLLP. They are a long-term, multi-decade property owner and property manager in Donaldson. They own and manage about 100 properties, 90% of which are, are residential in use. Maria Moth is here with me, right to my right. She's the partner and project manager for the company. And their office headquarters is immediately next door. On this slide, you can see to the north. Their office building is in there, along with a couple of other structures that were previous residential structures, but are now being used for retail and primarily office space. Regarding the policy, the existing policy that's in place does not recognize the fact that these properties that we're talking about are, are already zoned office. They're either Office Limited or, or Office Neighborhood. So the current policy, which is residential in character, doesn't recognize that existing zoning. And one of the things that this policy boundary will do is pretty much be equidistant from the intersection of Lebanon Pike, on the south side, as it is on the north side. So when you look at that larger intersection, you're now going to see a, a stretch of this policy being about the same, both on the north and the south side of Lebanon Pike. The objective here is to reuse these existing buildings that you see on the screen. As you can see, what my client has done here historically, they've taken buildings that have been used residentially in the past, they convert those buildings to either office, retail, or restaurant use, and that's sort of their, 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 for lack of a better word, you know, their, their mission with the properties. They buy, they hold, they reuse. These buildings are about 800 to 2,000 square feet in size, so we're, we're talking really something nominal in character, as it relates to the surrounding area. And they're asking for this mixed-use neighborhood zoning district, which will allow the addition of, from what we don't have today, we don't have the opportunity to put residences, occupancy in those existing zoning. The existing zoning does not allow residential occupancy, so this MUN will do that. It will also allow the opportunity for live-work space, and of course, the retail objective, and particularly restaurant objective, small scale. So with those comments, we ask for your support, your endorsement. The staff has done a good job in meeting with us. We actually kicked this process off last summer, late last summer. We thought that there might be a, a quicker result than now, but nonetheless, we're happy with where we are. Staff's been very patient with us, as we have with them, and so we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal. And councilman, whether you want to, usually councilmembers like to go last, or you can go first. Just want to make sure that that's okay with you. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, ma'am. Welcome, and state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes.
My name is Tharyn Lloyd. I live at 3160 Hartsfield Pike in Lebanon.
Wait a second, just come on up, scoot a little closer. We gotta get it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Tharyn Lloyd. My husband and I live at 3160 Hartsfield Pike in Lebanon, Tennessee. But we own two houses on Ridgeway Drive, in which we have a son in each house. We just have a mother in each house, and now it's a son in each of those houses, at 212 and 214 Ridgeway. I believe they might back up to one or more of the properties that would be rezoned, is what I thought. Now I'm finding that they've already been rezoned, but we were never notified that there was any rezoning going on of those properties that back up to ours. So that was a surprise. Our concern is about the traffic on McGavick Pike, because there are businesses there that people who live in those, on those streets that are nearby, walk to. One of our sons walked to one of those businesses, was struck by a motorist, a hit-and-run driver. He received a traumatic brain injury, spent three months in Vanderbilt Hospital, and then we moved in with him for six more months. He was left totally blind. And so the traffic is our concern. We don't want more traffic, and we felt that something that's commercial in nature would cause more traffic. Now I'm told that that's not the case, but I find that hard to believe. That is our concern, that if we're going to have more commercial development, that you do something about the traffic.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Counselman?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, councilmen. Yeah, Sean said, this is a third-generation family that's been in Donaldson. They've done extraordinary things, and this is kind of a second phase. They don't own any other properties, so they're, this is not going to continue on, if you will. This is a really good adaptive reuse project. The, the first phase was enormously successful. As Donaldson has changed, this has been services and whatnot that Donaldson has been asking for. And so they've done a wonderful job, and the community meeting that we had was very successful. And people are really excited about this, this next phase. I really think that the, you know, the availability of other retail and whatnot, that small scale, actually has the effect of slowing traffic down. And so you're not going to see in, in this phase, even really, the, the intensity, if you will, that, that the first one had. The first one did have a, a restaurant, and was probably the longest parcel that, that they owned. So it's not going to be like that. But again, this is something that, that everybody is supportive of. You know, if we have to do, work with Public Works, traffic calming, whatnot, absolutely could do that. I absolutely empathize with the lady just speaking, but, but anyway, the, the community is very supportive of it. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate you coming down. And the applicant has a two-minute rebuttal?
Just real, real quick, Mr. Chairman, we had the good fortune of speaking with Mrs. Lloyd and her husband, Dr. Lloyd, before this meeting began, and they are the reason this, this item came off consent. They wanted it pulled, so that they could make their comments, and we understand and, 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 you know, respect the issues that they've experienced, you know, with, with their son. My understanding, though, is that their property is not on this screen. I believe there, there are two streets to the right of what you see on this screen, so their property does not back up to the property here. In fact, my client owns the property that back up on the right side of the screen to, to those two, those three properties. So with that, and your staff, by the way, has done a good job of demonstrating that with this rezoning under MUN, the traffic will actually be less in the peak hour of the morning and peak hour in the PM than it would be if it were fully developed out as currently zoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And, but first, just a reminder to the commissioners, 13A is a community plan, and Bob, just to make sure, explain to, remind the commissioners what that means.
It is a community plan amendment, which requires six affirmative votes, and there are six of you here, so it would have to be unanimous. And that's, that vote is taken first before the zone change. Item 13A would be taken first when you vote. You can discuss them together, but item 13A would be taken first, and then 13B second.
So it's okay for us to discuss both items at the same time, but as Bob said, I wanted to remind the commissioners of what we're voting on, just so there's no confusion. So, Commissioner Gobble, you want to go first?
Yeah, thanks. I, I tend to agree with, with staff's recommendation. I don't see any reason not to at this point, but I am anxious to see what the other commissioners say.
Commissioner Samms?
I don't have any questions at this point. I just want to listen to.
Commissioner Haynes?
I'm going to support staff on both, both measures.
Commissioner Michelle?
I have a couple of questions. When was this property zoned for Office Neighborhood and Office Limited?
When was it zoned? We may need to take a moment to research that. We can pull it up. They'll pull it up over here, if you want to go to another.
Next question.
Okay. Well, I guess that's, my next question could be, what measures, the councilman indicated that there could be measures taken for traffic calming. What kind of measures could be taken for traffic calming? I'm just interested to know that.
Michael Briggs is here. He might want to take that question.
So usually, the traffic calming program is handled through Public Works. The neighborhood will make an application, and Public Works staff looks at that application, will go out, do traffic counts and a speed study, and will determine what appropriate measures can be done.
Which might include?
It depends on the street. So they look at how the street fits into the network. So if it's a collector versus a local street, it can involve things like signage, putting pavement markings with this, reinforcing the speed limit on the pavement, all the way to things like speed humps or chicanes that make traffic physically slow down on that street. I believe this is a collector being on McGavick Pike.
No, it's not.
No, I'm sorry. So it, it will depend on how it fits into the system, as to what actual traffic calming device they'll deploy.
And how does that officially get instituted?
So there's an application that the, either the neighbors can fill out, or the council member can work with Public Works and make a request to look at traffic calming. Public Works keeps a whole list of requests, and they go out as needed to look at those sites.
Do we have an answer on the?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, so those rezonings were in 2006.
Okay, thanks. So then, it seems to me that all of this makes sense. I really appreciate what staff did to meet with the community, and to make a compromise, to reduce the amount of acreage that's changed. And the plan seems to really fit into the community plan and the current policy, and I agree with staff's recommendation.
Counselman?
Yes, I support the recommendation, but both, on both cases. But I wanted to disgrace a minute. Anybody can ask for the traffic and parking, the Public Works people to come and do a traffic study. And I highly encourage everybody watching to do that. If you think that your community is under duress because of speeding or other issues like that, you may contact Public Works and ask them to come and do a study. It's, it's really a great way to get a handle on, on issues of, sorry, I'm disgracing so much, but.
It's a public service announcement for Public Works.
Yes, good.
That's okay. Without objection. It's fine, councilman. Councilman, you're the last to speak. You could.
I make a motion to support the recommendation, both recommendations for 13A and 13B.
So we'll vote on these separately. We'll have to do 13A first. So your motion's for 13A?
Yes.
So it's a proper motion, and a second, any discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no. Ayes have it. 13A is adopted. We'll need another motion for 13B.
I make the same motion for 13B.
That's a proper motion and second?
And that is staff recommendation.
To support the staff, the beautiful staff recommendation.
That's a proper motion and properly seconded. Any other discussion on 13B? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no. Ayes have it. So we are on our last. Is everybody okay? We've only been here about an hour and 10 minutes, so I think we can keep going. Is that okay with everybody? All right. We are on item number, we're on item 17.
Okay. Item 17 is a request for specific plan zoning to permit a mixed-use development on various properties, which you see shaded in yellow. These properties total about 36 acres, and they're located north of the Cumberland River and Baptist World Center Drive, and west of Brick Church Pike and Interstate 65. There is a stream that flows through the center of the site called Page's Branch, and you'll hear me mention that throughout this presentation. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And while we're on the aerial photograph to point out kind of the existing state of this site, you'll notice that there are a couple of large-scale industrial uses that are occupying most of the property currently. The current zoning in this area is a mix of single-family residential, office, and industrial zoning, with the single-family residential zoning kind of in the northwest portion of the site, and the industrial and office in the southeast and closer to the river. You'll see areas of residential zoning to both the northwest and the southeast, where there are existing developed neighborhoods, and larger areas of industrial zoning closer to the interstate and to the river. This site is within the Haynes Trinity Small Area Plan, which was adopted by the Planning Commission in January, after an extensive community engagement process, which involved numerous stakeholders and a week-long charrette that was held in the community. The plan, which documents, documents the vision and goals articulated by the community during that process, resulted in an update to the land use policies applicable in all of the study area, but also this particular portion of it, as well as some supplemental policies related to mobility, parks, and open space. And those were addressing particular needs or desires identified by the community in this area. The specific plan zoning under consideration today is a regulatory-specific plan, so it does not include a full detailed site plan. Instead, it divides the zone change area into eight sub-districts, which you see numbered on this map, and then establishes use and development standards appropriate for each of those sub-districts, that are based on the context of the area, as well as the goals of the underlying land use policies. This table summarizes those standards, the development and use standards. I'm not going to go into all of the detail. There's a lot of information there. But generally, these rely on the alternative zoning districts in the zoning code, and then they are modified or supplemented as appropriate for the policy goals in this area. In general, the plan locates higher-intensity development along the river and in the center of the site, and transitions to lower intensity around the perimeter. And to give you an example of that, you'll see zones one and three at the north end of the plan that are closest to that existing neighborhood. The standards for those zones are based on one- and two-family R6A zoning, or low-intensity multifamily RM9A zoning, and that's to ensure that there's an appropriate transition as it moves into the neighborhood and it's residential in character. Sometimes you're Sometimes you'll see those transitions happening within one of the sub-district zones. So for instance, in seven, which kind of spans this whole southern part of the SP, that allows for more intensity near the center and restricts the height and scale of development as you move out to the edge along these existing lots on weekly. The SP also includes some additional standards that govern all of the development to address the goals of the supplemental policies in the Haynes Trinity Small Area Plan. The first of those, which is focused on mobility, was focused on creating and enhancing the urban grid to better connect communities in the study area internally and externally. And this SP addresses that in several ways. There are standards that require that with any final SP for any development within this area, that existing public streets be extended and constructed to Public Works standards, or if unbuilt right-of-way is there, it be extended and constructed. Or if the development begins in a place where there are no existing street connections, that a new urban grid of streets and alleys that makes sense in a larger network be established. There's also a requirement that limits vehicular access to alleys. And then in certain sub-districts where the Small Area Plan called out specific streets that should connect, those are incorporated into the sub-district standards. Likewise, there are some specific standards to address the parks and mobility, or parks and open space policies. Those call for a community desire to get a primary greenway system established along the Cumberland River and a secondary greenway system established along Page's Branch, which flows right through the site. And so there are requirements in this SP that greenways be dedicated and constructed to Metro Park standards with each final SP. And also some design standards to ensure that development that occurs along those greenways activates them and makes them meaningful public spaces in the way that the community So these are the land use policies that were adopted with the Small Area Plan. There are some small areas of T4 urban neighborhood maintenance policy and T4 urban neighborhood evolving policy at the north. And as I mentioned before, those sub-districts permit only residential uses in a manner that's consistent with those policies. The conservation policy that you're seeing, the green, is the, what's indicating the river and Page's Branch. And the, the Small Area Plan called for connecting the community to these resources through the greenways and through meaningful development along those greenways. And then the remainder of the area is in T4 mixed-use neighborhood policy, which does support a range of mixed uses and intensity. And the, the transitions to the perimeter of the plan are to ensure that the intensity does fit into the context of the neighborhood. The additional intensity proposed along the river and Page's Branch is intended to activate the greenways and make sure that they're lively and vibrant open spaces for the community, and also to offset some of the significant contributions to greenway and street infrastructure that will be required for any development to occur in this area. So the SP, as proposed, works to implement the community vision, which was captured in the Small Area Plan, to enhance the natural environment, connect the community to the river, and grow a vibrant urban and connected mixed-use neighborhood. The sub-districts in the SP are consistent with the underlying land use policies and with the supplemental policies identified in the Small Area Plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. And we'll open this item for public hearing. And if the applicant will come on up, and you know the drill, you've got 10 minutes, and well, you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Say your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates, and I'm representing the applicants on this proposal. What they're passing around right now is pretty important. It gives you a visual of this site, the area that we're talking about. These properties contain Combs Industrial, and also contains a very large mulch operation, a tremendously large mulch operation that actually sits on an R6 or R5 zoning today. It's more or less grandfathered in, and this community, although you've seen a lot of development on Fern Avenue, it's not proceeding north. And the reason it hasn't is because of that. It is a disaster. People that live in the area think that there's odors coming from the Combs Industrial site. It's coming from the mulch facility, and it is unbelievable. I had one of my community meetings that day, Almeny Temple, and I thought they had just put out mulch. It was, it was odor coming from this facility. So when the proprietors contacted me in September, I was pretty excited that they wanted to basically move these or relocate these or do away with these operations. And so we talked to Councilman DeCosta Hastings at the time, and we felt like a mixed-use zoning was appropriate. At that time, he was ready to support a mixed use. I went to the Planning Commission, they said, hey, Roy, we're getting ready to do a whole new land use policy for this area. Could you hold off? And I did. And the first meeting that we had on the land use policy is the biggest meeting I've ever been to involving land use. There were probably hundreds of people there that couldn't even fit into the room. And everybody sat down with big drawings of what they wanted to see in this whole Trinity area. In this particular site, it was all agreed upon that this would be mixed use. And I mean, it was unanimously agreed upon. Planning Commission had a week charrette. They came back with their presentation to the community, and the community all agreed that this area should largely be T4 mixed use. Now, that wasn't sort of the end of it. There were a lot of requirements placed in the land use policy that dealt with connectivity, with buffers, with uses, with heights, with the development of the greenways, creating public open space. And we've worked with staff. Staff has been tremendous. Sean has spent a tremendous amount of time on this, as well as Dara, who both happen to be on your agenda today, asking for their contracts to be renewed, and I hope you do that. Maybe you should give them a little bit of a raise. But anyway, we've worked very hard with them, and what's happened is, in this SP, all of the language in the land use policy has been added to this SP. So in essence, which is before you today, is a, pretty much a mirror image of the land use policy that was proposed, as far as the design standards, the greenway standards, the connectivity standards, the uses that would happen within each sub-area. You recall the colored map that they showed up there and all the different colors? The uses that are indicated coincide with the land use policy colors below. So there had, there's been a tremendous amount of community outreach on this. Hundreds of people have been involved in this process. I know there may still be a few questions, but when my client approached me in September, he more or less had a drop-dead date, and this is that date. I've deferred this at the last Planning Commission because we were just trying to make sure that we had everything the way we needed it. So this plan, before you today, is one that's endorsed by the Planning Commission staff. We've worked on it very hard. It matches the community policy to a T, and I'd hope that you would support it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White, 315 Dedrick Street. I represent the applicant in this case. I can summarize the comments relatively quickly, and that is, there's clearly industrial uses on the property right now. They're grandfathered in. They can stay there indefinitely. One of the reasons it was so appealing to the community was the chance with this increase of interest in the area and the gentrification, if you will, that the rezoning would clearly allow those operations to go somewhere else in the county. That's clearly the plan. Originally, there was enough support that I had spoken to Roy Dale. We both thought about perhaps just a base zone change. I think the council and some people in the community were supportive of that. But as we continue to meet with the staff, their ideas were what you've seen in this report today. These eight sub-districts make for an excellent transition. And at the end of the day, what's being proposed by our client in this application is totally consistent with what the view of hundreds of people had out there. So there's been tremendous neighborhood involvement, tremendous continuity in carrying that forward. This is a critical piece, and to go from two industrial uses there on the property to what we're talking about is a huge plus. There may be some questions, but at the end of the day, what's being proposed is totally consistent with the policy and has been ratcheted up to another step with the sub-districts, which I give the staff the credit for. They put in a tremendous amount of time. Roy has attended more of those meetings than I have, but the staff's involvement in getting it to this point has been incredibly appreciated. We'd urge your approval. Thank you for your consideration.
We'll reserve here two minutes for rebuttal. Yes, sir. Anyone wishing to speak in support?
Jim McLean, 3512 Murphy Road in Nashville, Tennessee. And I know how it feels to be last on the agenda, and I was afraid you might call for a 10-minute break before you heard this one, so thank you for not doing that.
We almost did.
You've heard the reasons why that we went through the January meeting, got that approved for the policy. The key to it today is that the property that's willing to relocate will open up other develop, people coming in to develop, they're hesitant to come in because of the odor. Jack Cothran had tried to be here today, he's in Chattanooga. His brother's real sick, and he felt he needed to be down there, but he's the one that kind of spearheaded this for the last 20 years. So I urge you to vote for this today, and let's move along, so thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, and then two minutes, welcome, two minutes.
My name's Craig Jacobson. I live at 1805 Liberia Street. And I'm opposed to this because of the, the property, the industrial uses in that area right now, because it is using, in zone one there, they're using the residential property as a, as an exit road that drives right out in front of my house. They drag dirt out in front of my house, they drive over it with their semis and their pickup trucks, puts 50 feet of dust in the air, which comes down on my house, on my cars. I've had to breathe it, breathe it for 15 years, and I'm, I'm sure it's causing problems for my health. And I've tried, there was a, there was a court case in, in 2007, because they tried to make it, they were trying to say all this property was grandfathered in, and when I went to court, they, the judge ruled that they couldn't, it wasn't grandfathered in, and that it was residential property. And that, they'd been using it, they actually moved Liberia Street. Liberia Street comes down, takes a right, and goes onto that property. They moved it, they closed off where Liberia Street was, and opened it up right at the end of the street and drive right in front of my house. The semis come, they honk every time they come, because there's a 45-degree turn there, to go onto Liberia Street all day long, 10 or 12 semis a day, seven days a week. You hear the brakes going, it's, it's been a mess, and I've been, I've been trying to deal with this for 15 years. And I'm afraid that this thing is going to actually make it legal for them to do that, which I've been trying to stop forever. So that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up, say your name and, and address. Two minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Winnie Forrester. I live at 2611 Shreve Lane, and I am a member of the Haynes Trinity Neighborhood Coalition. And the issue here is not whether we are for or against this project, and I actually want to say that really, obviously, this SP has planning's fingerprints all over it because it incorporated much of what was in the land use update policy. So that's not the issue we have with this. What we, the issue that we have is that ever since the charrette, we have not heard one word from planning, any developers, nothing. No community meetings, no acknowledgement that we exist, and no asking for input. So we were very surprised to find out about this, this whole rollout. In fact, the only way we found out was when the agenda was published this week, and I read it. And so, you know, it was quite a surprise that this was on the agenda and we knew nothing about it. So we, this week, proactively contacted planning and the applicant, who told us he would not defer the, the proposal as any delay through Metro Council was unacceptable to him. So he did offer to have a meeting in the next six weeks and even help us with mailings to the residents and all that. And we really, that's, we're appreciative of that. But the problem is, is that approval for the project will have already been given, and then our input would be limited. And similar to the previous case tonight, once this rezoning is approved and the land is sold and the developers make, I mean, the, the landowners make a ton of money, and whoever buys it can come in and develop, and, and the zoning is already in place, and we have zero input. So I just find, we find that unacceptable. All we want as a community is education and the respect to come to us, show us all these, these, you know, the dog and pony show. Let people ask questions. So we are asking for this to be delayed so that can occur. We are the ones as residents that are going to have to live with this for the years and decades to come. The people who own this property and make a windfall will long be gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir.
Bobby Stalker, 606 Chris Street. I'm a resident in Trinity Hills. I've been there since 1963. And my community is also a part of this coalition that Ms. Forrester talked about. And I also was a member of the Planning Commission Steering Committee that made all of these provisions that you approved. What I would like to ask is that these people that's going to be affected in this area, it's known as Haynes Me, 70% of these people are seniors and retired people. And because of such a short notice, a lot of them who had concerns to be here, who as Ms. Forrester mentioned, just learned about this in the last few days. What I would like to ask is that you consider to defer, which Mr. Roy Dale has already been nice enough to admit, that he would give us a chance to meet with these people, to give them a chance to have a community meeting with these developers so they could find out exactly what's going to take place so they can have some involvement as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? I want to make sure we get everybody. And a councilman's not here, and two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a pretty good test, went to the Planning Commission, that you only had three people speaking in opposition to something that affects hundreds of people. And, you know, one of the applicants was a little confusing. This could be confusing, I've got it, but what's proposed would eliminate those industrial uses. Those will go away. The Dusty's talking about goes away, the traffic costs about goes away. All of that goes away. The plan that's before you today is exactly the plan that was approved by this community in the land use policy. It's exactly the same plan. So what I told the people that called me, I think they called, they were for yesterday that had concerns, anytime we represent a zoning bill to go to the council, there's a public hearing at the council, that's not enough, you know, adequate time for, to people to ask questions. So we will always hold a community meeting, and DeCosta, I'm sure, will want to have one. But he would like to have the, you know, the endorsement from the Planning Commission, so when we're talking to people, they'll know exactly what's proposed and what's been recommended. If the community has changes they want to make, as long as those changes are positive, as long as they're not adding density, then they can simply make those changes and they can be added to a council bill. But I think that the way this is presented today, it's 100% in conformance with the land use policy, it's consistent with the policy in every way, and like I said before, if, if we do not get a recommendation at this meeting, that means we will miss a May public hearing and get put off until July. And I started this process in September, and I promised my client it would be over in May. So I can't defer this, and there's really no reason to defer this. Do you want to say anything? Okay. So you do have a recommendation from staff. This matches the land use policy per T. I will spend any amount of time the community wants me to meet with them. I think part of the process, they want to understand a process, not necessarily what's proposed, but, you know, how this process works. I will sit down with them, I'll let them understand exactly how the zoning works and how things work through a process. But for today, I request that you recommend approval of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilman, you want to go first?
Yes, thank you. I, that's what I thought that this was removing that industrial, so I was, thanks for confirming that. It seems like a group project, a good way to be inclusive with the community and reset a part of the city, so I'm going to support it.
Commissioner Michelle?
A couple questions. First of all, just to respond to the one gentleman's statement about the difficulty he's had with that industrial situation. If we... If we, if this is approved, what would that business be required to do?
So the current status of those uses would actually be a determination made by the zoning administrator in the codes department. The zoning that's being requested today is based on some zoning districts in the code that don't permit heavy industrial uses. But depending on the status of those businesses that are there, if they are non-conforming legally operating, then they would not necessarily have to go away. And there's not a timeframe in this SP that says they will go away by a particular point or anything. Now, if they're not operating legally as a non-conforming use, then the codes department would need to enforce the closure of those. But that would be at the discretion of the codes department and the zoning administrator.
But this new, if we approved this, it would not allow this business, it wouldn't lend any more credence or legality to this business than it has now.
Right. I think the uses that are there, particularly in the portion of the site that's zoned RS5, are not consistent with that zoning district. So to the extent that they're already there, they are. But this would not make them any more conforming than they are currently.
Okay. I have another question, and that is, I'm a little confused. I felt, I felt like the charrette was really great and that you all had a lot of input from the community, and it seems like this plan fits perfectly with that. And yet, we still have community members saying they weren't included in the process. And so I just want to try to understand, once we have one of these really inclusive charrettes, what is necessary after that to continue contact with the community?
Very often, after a community planning process has taken place, there will be regular neighborhood meetings or meetings sponsored by a council member to talk about specific zone changes or the like. Those aren't sponsored by the planning department. We may attend if we're asked to, for example, but it's not a requirement of the planning department to hold community meetings for each zone change request, for example, that comes through. But as you've noted, we do pay very careful attention to make sure that when we're imagining a policy change, that we, you know, invite, you know, as many folks as we can who we think are affected and really take a deep dive, as they did, in that area.
So knowing that and knowing how carefully this has been crafted and how closely it adheres to everything that was planned in the charrette, which was very inclusive, it is a little too bad that the developer didn't have another meeting, but I feel like they have really done their best. They mean really well, and they're trying to adhere to what the community has said that it wants and even rectifies the situation that a gentleman was upset about. And so I can't see any reason to disagree with staff recommendation.
Commissioner Haines? No comments. Commissioner Sims?
I want to go back to a comment I made a few weeks ago when this came up. This was an amazing plan, put together with the neighborhood, with a lot of work and a lot of thought and so much input from the community that it's kind of, I'm still amazed at it in the four other neighborhoods. My only concern about this, I actually think this is really smart. It's not asking for anything beyond what has already been agreed to in the planning, is that it does set a tone that other developers, as they come into this plan, can do what they want without engaging the community. However, that's not something I think that, without a mandate somehow, without some kind of, I know other neighborhoods have kind of said, "Did you talk to planning? Did you talk to, I mean, did you talk to the fire department? Did you talk to the..." I wish we would have something that requires people to talk to the community. Because we can't keep doing things to the community, we must do it with them. Having said all that, I think this is an awesome plan. I drove through this. Actually, I got lost in this. I didn't even know kind of where I was back there. And this is so much better than what's there. And as much as I hate to do this because I'm such a, you know, I love our neighborhoods and know that that is the heartbeat of our Nashville Next Plan, I would like to encourage all developers and council people to please meet with their communities. Over the long haul, it's the best for our city, but I don't see any reason to vote no on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gob.
I agree. I think that it makes all kinds of sense to do this and let this move forward. So I'm in favor of it.
We need a motion. Oh, hold on one second.
I just wanted to make a comment about that. If there are a question for the staff, if they were to make any changes that were over 10% of what is on the plan, they would have to come back to the community, right?
If it gets to council, prior to third reading, if there's amendments, is that what you're asking, or?
After the plan is approved. If they make, if they go beyond a certain, I mean, if they deviate, the people that are going to want to build stuff in here, if they want to change and not do what is on the plan by a certain percentage, I think it's 10%.
I'll defer that to Sean if there's any conditions on this SP that have a percentage associated with it.
So, councilmember, I think you might be thinking of some of the standards that apply when we're dealing with PUDs, which do rely on percentages. But with a specific plan, the standards governing anyone who develops here, whether it's current owners or future ones, are what's laid out in the plan. So if they wanted to modify a standard in the plan, that's the same as modifying their zoning. So that would be a public process. There are some, they can do less usually, and there are sometimes some things that have to be adjusted at final, like if the road needs to shift because it turns out there's a sinkhole or something. But to change the actual standards governing development here, they would have to go through a public process.
And staff reviews all final site plans against the plan approved by the council, and we make the determination on whether it is within the guidelines of that SP. I just wasn't clear on whether there was anything in this particular SP that had percentages.
And so my point was that there will be an opportunity for community input if there was a change on what was approved. That's what I was trying to say.
Anything else, councilman? Any other discussion? We'll need a motion.
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
There's a motion to approve staff recommendation. Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and this item has passed. We are on to... That concludes our public hearing, so we're on other business. And nothing for historic. Commissioner Haynes? Parks?
The big news from Parks is Mayor Brawley has declared that Fort Negley will remain a park. So I encourage the council to fine a million dollars for the demolition of Greer Stadium. And we look forward to the planning stages of making that an exciting part of our city.
If everybody could, if you're, everybody could leave the room, we're still having a meeting, I appreciate it, or at least sit down and... All right, thank you. We have executive committee report. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that's been involved in our search for a planning director. We had our first subject matter expert committee that met, and I want to thank Commissioner Haynes for serving on that. And they have got to pull down to six applicants, and so the interview committee will get together in April. We're trying to work on dates. As you know, it's hard to get the applicants to come in. They're all over the United States, and everybody scheduled that's on that committee. So we're working on that, but it should be in April. We'll keep you all abreast, and then we're going to try to get it down to two or three candidates and bring them in front of the commission. And so we'll be, we're moving along at a pretty good pace. And so I just want to say thank you for everybody that had, gave input to the HR director, and overall, we had about 60 applicants apply. And so I just want to say thank you for everybody. And I believe that those committees have been a very diverse, very balanced committees. And I think that we're moving forward as we promised. So I hope that you all think that, too. So I look forward to that, and that's all I have on executive committee report. Legislative report. I want to make sure we get, do we have a legislative report, councilman? I missed it last time. I apologize.
Oh, well, I thought you were never going to ask me again, so I didn't have anything already. But we have a new mayor.
Yes.
Probably by now know that we had to change this. Yeah, I don't have any report.
Okay. Director's report, do you have anything, Bob?
Just reminders about upcoming work sessions. We have a work session on April 10 at 11:30 a.m. at our office building here at 802nd Avenue South. Our next commission meeting, I just want to remind everyone again, is April 12 at the Metro Public School Board at 2601 Bransford Avenue. And so any cases that were deferred today to the next agenda will be at a different location. Just want to have that on the record for the viewing public. And then we have our meeting on April 19 on the capital improvement budget only. That's the only thing that will be considered on that meeting, and that will be at 511 Omen Street, the Metro Parks conference room.
And, councilman, I recognize you in one second. I forgot to mention, we did have our budget hearing with the new mayor. It went well. We are able to do what the mayor has asked us as far as budgetary concerns, and then we also are bringing in, I think it's what, about $1.5 million in a census project that we, that only cost us $200 to apply for. So it was, was that correct, Bob?
About $1.7 per year for three years.
That's a good investment. So I was very proud to be there, and the team, the staff team did a really good job in representing us. And so I want to say thank you to Bob for doing that. Thank you, Bob. Councilman?
Yeah, I forgot an important thing. As the chair of the planning committee of the council, I called for a special meeting to discuss transit driven developments. We are going to have, hopefully, if the referendum passes, we are going to have many of those, and we want to make sure that they are done right. So we are going to have a meeting, and it will include MDHA and planning staff and other stakeholders. And we hope that we can flesh out any issues. That way, when we start doing this, they're good. So just wanted to share with the people that might be watching.
Good update. Anything else? Anything else? Seeing no other business, is there a motion adjourned or adjourned?